I'm sure we're live.
Welcome back to our Monday morning, May 12th meeting. Next on our agenda is our road and bridge presentation from our engineer Dan Koontz. Director Koontz.
Good morning. Looking around because Steve Anderson, Weed Department Supervisor, apparently said he was double booked. So I'm gonna try to go through this with you.
It's just an update. It's an easy one.
It's really just a, he said it was a multi-year agreement that was multiple agencies. We've done it several times before. We just need to update it again with new names, new dates.
I looked at it. I didn't have any questions. Looked like it was just a redo of existing contracts.
Grant, let's see which one is it?
This is the one that they had to send us this morning. For some reason, our original file was corrupted.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was over here.
You just need a motion to approve?
Yes, please.
I would move that we sign the Upper Pec, Cooperative Weed Management Area MOU.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye. I've got an actual sign here. Steve's on it, so. He said I can easily do this.
Usually I just want to make sure he's staffed up, but it sounded like this morning.
It's just the chairman.
Sounds like this morning he's fully staffed, so that's exciting.
Yeah, that is awesome.
Done this work in the past without being fully.
And he's really excited about the, you know, the potential of having, you know, fully staffed. These guys are just asking all kinds of questions, so they're really engaged, so, which is hugely important. I think Steve's really excited about it.
These are all seventeen-year-old kids, or they?
Oh, no, no, there, he said there was a, I think it was a pro football player. Not sure from where, but.
What?
Yeah, he was retired.
That's awesome.
Player, so.
Football player, that needs something to do.
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty cool. I haven't met him, you know, but.
A lot of them live in Whitetail. The South Carolina Panthers have found Valley County.
Oh, okay.
I can't imagine that one's going to work, so.
Yeah. Excited, he sounds very excited about, appreciative of the work, so.
Good.
So next on the agenda, I do have the the contract for the independent inspection for our new shop. We needed to have, the contractor has his own, but we also need to have our own independent inspector out there over and above what the building department can provide because there's specialty needs in terms of like welding inspections and bolt inspections that they don't have the expertise in. And then also, they're out there, gonna test the compaction of all of the material that they're gonna do for the new building. So essentially, I think it's mostly covered.
So is this, I mean, this twenty-two thousand five hundred, is that for the duration of the project?
That would be for the duration of the project.
Whole thing. And that's, you feel it's more to?
I think we, you know, Jeff and I talked about this. I think there are times where we can do it, do our own kind of inspections. But I think it's important to have somebody in those, those types of construction elements, their day-to-day activity to activity, just to ensure that it is being, excuse me, performed appropriately, so.
I would want them to be only communicating with you guys, not with the contractor.
Yes, correct.
Important that they, they find something.
The, the.
Chain of command.
Exactly. I will remind them of that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the professional services and consulting agreement with Atlas.
In second and all in favor?
Aye.
Think if they find one or two things for this amount of money as well.
Round it to everybody.
So do we know anything about the dirt yet that's under that building?
Where are we at getting started and?
They're out there, already starting to move in and doing the work. I don't know if they're.
You're gonna test the dirt, is what I'm asking?
Oh, not, like what we ran into with Otto Power. So we don't have to do any further investigations of that except for the water. I think we'll, we'll do the testing for the water at a later date, but you will provide that.
I did sign it, yes, thank you.
EQ, give us one. I have this test first. Just well, yeah. If you can round it to that.
Dan, have you heard back on the testing at the annex parking lot?
I have not. In fact, I was planning on trying to get kind of an update on that along with the West Roseberry, what they did out there as well.
Do you have on the agenda yet a conversation about a road levy?
Not yet. I have not scheduled that yet, but I will.
Let's prioritize that, maybe get it on from May twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh.
Nineteenth is already full. We're gonna be in VOCC or VOE here pretty soon, and we just need to get this discussion started.
We haven't looked at any of that yet.
So as far as the levy, I have looked into it a little bit in, in terms of like other restrictions that have, have done levies before. Also, I really, I really need to figure out where our budget currently resides. Because I think, as we all know, we, SRS did not get fully, get paid. And so I'm trying to scramble now to figure out what we can really afford and what priorities we need to, need to do because I really, you know, the West Roseberry section really needs to be done. The, the, there's other roadways like Norwood that failed. Loomis is on the cusp of failing.
There's so many of them.
Mark-to-market is West Mountain. I mean, we've got a lot of several, several locations where we need, you know.
What are you putting in the budget as far as any overages on this building? Because that's, gold is.
Well, the other, yeah, the other thing that I'm struggling with now is we were anticipating on, on having a bridge crane inside the building to help move a lot of our vehicles, the heavy dump truck vehicle, the backs of them to lift up and down. I don't think we can afford that. That was a change order. That wasn't in the original contract, so. We were planning on doing it if we had the available funds.
Does it need to be done in phase one, or can it be?
I think what, yeah, I think what we could do is prep for it. If we do get available funds, then we can add, add it.
I think it'd be wise to do that, at least prep for it.
Well, it's, it's just advantageous to do it now because, before the tariffs start to kick in. And so we're.
They're gonna come off pretty soon. You're gonna be fine.
Yeah, so anyhow, that's, that's something that we gotta work on. A couple other items I wanted to kind of mention. So Heinrich, we have a siphon that is in need of repair. It's just, oh, it's, it's probably maybe half mile off of fifty-five. And last year it was in the form of failing.
A siphon or a culvert?
A siphon. So this is in regards to the irrigation canal.
So what is a siphon?
So a siphon is just to siphon water from one side of the road, and it goes down and underneath, and it pops back up and fills the rest of it. So it has the ability to raise and lower the water based on where it's at. And it's in a kind of a low area, so it just siphons the water from one side to the other.
The siphon's failing?
I'm sorry?
Siphon is failing?
It, it actually failed at the end of last year. They noticed that it was overtopping the road. The water is supposed to come on in that particular area next week. So we're gonna have the Heinrich closed starting tomorrow. But the, from what I understand, the school bus route will not be affected that morning, but in the afternoon it will. And we're already getting the information out to them as well, so. A couple other things. You know, there are a lot of people out there that are willing to help us out. And as, as funding becomes less and less for us, we've got some property owners that have asked me, well, if we were to pitch in, could we pave certain areas, improve certain areas of our roadway? I'm presenting it as, you know, holistically to you that this might be an alternative that we could explore. There are a lot of, you know, things that have to be checked off and, you know, certain expectations of the property owners might not be all met. But there might be an opportunity that we could work with various property owners along a particular road to help not fully fund it, but maybe partially fund certain roadways. So in, in particular.
So Dan, with that thought, I think that we've always not done it since I've been here. Used to do it, but is there a concern that they are paying taxes? Well, no, because their taxes don't hit the roadway. If we pass a road levy and they are paying property taxes, there was a concern that they would be double taxed. And that was something we could never remedy until we knew if we needed a road levy.
Right, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily think of it in terms of a double tax in the event that the property owners are willing to come in with additional funds for themselves. If they could work together, then potentially you could.
Like a partnership with an HOA?
Could be, yeah.
Like a voluntary contribution.
Yes, it would be a contribution in that it wouldn't be taxing on the particular property.
Right.
I have, I have no problem with partnerships, definitely. I think an MOU needs to be in place.
Absolutely. The, the expectations are always, at least you can spell it out in some way in that, in that agreement, so. So I think I'd be working with.
Anything right now.
I'd be working with the, the PA's office to, to establish something like that if, if, if we want to pursue it. I, I can reach out to the, the individuals that I have already talked with and let them know that you guys are potentially interested in it, and we would like to go step by step down the process.
The cost for paving anymore, I mean, it's, what's the major thing that's gone up? Truck time or labor or what?
Well, I, you know, I, I always think that no matter where you're at in, in a timeline, the materials that you buy, you're paying the same amount for labor. So you're essentially, it's fifty, it's about a fifty-fifty split. So if you're, you know, essentially looking at like a million dollars of a roadway, you know, you're also including that labor cost in there, so.
So what I don't want is for those that can't afford this service to feel like the county is putting money for those that are wealthy enough to afford this service.
And that's it, that would be a concern, yeah.
Is, I, I think this needs to be a part of the overall solution. But I think the road levy conversation needs to address all of this at once.
I could see that point.
Want, yeah, we don't want our constituents to go, hey, you're more focused over there. However, if people are willing to share in the costs, it saves everybody at the end of the day. So we do need to just make sure that, you know, we think it through and be transparent with the public on what we're doing and.
Yeah.
So I, I have no problem going down that path and, you know, looking at it. If we can do less than a road levy because of something, then that's a benefit to all, but. And the other thing of the road levy that we all need to be thinking about is we need a priority list of what needs to happen, so we would know what funding mechanism. But also if this is gonna be a two-year override, which requires fifty percent approval, or if this is going to be a long-term solution, which is a supermajority. Those are the kind of conversations we need to think about and.
Yeah, the, the, the other thing that I'm really concerned about is our preventative maintenance program. Just because we put new pavement down doesn't, doesn't mean we walk away for ten years. We have to seal it in some way, otherwise it's a lot of money and we're not.
No, we need to, I need, we need to have that preventative maintenance set up.
That need, that needs to be a part of the, the overall thought process in terms of the levy and how that fits within the levy.
Absolutely, and communicated correctly, so that we have a set aside. And I think when we're looking at it too, you know, we need to have a guarantee that either we're, we're paving so many miles per year on these roads that, you know, are always the biggest concerns, or, you know, what does that look like? We're gonna turn pavement back to dirt because it's easier to maintain on these sections. People need to have a full, transparent conversation. But that's gonna be sooner rather than later, because if we put something on in November, we need to be messaging now.
Well, I think we have to really be, I think strategically, we need to focus more attention in terms of our major collectors with the majority of the traffic.
Absolutely.
That is where a lot of, I'm starting to see a lot of the pavement failures because it, we really need to start putting time and effort into those. A, a lot of them, of the major collectors are, could potentially be federally funded. So I'm trying to come up with a good strategy, especially for farm-to-market in certain areas along there where we could do, you know, the LTAC grants, working with Ken to establish a, a a section of roadway along there, and then systematically go down and, and try to fix farm-to-market along the way with the federal, federal.
I think what we're seeing too is that we're seeing like, I'm just looking on here, but where a lot of the growth is at. We're seeing that's where all the big trucks are rolling. Yeah, and they're hammering some of these major.
We, we, that's the. So a part of the tax levy, we really need to reestablish our transportation plan and come up with a good alternative for truck, an actual truck route. Because I think a lot of that, because it's, you know, everybody goes where everybody wants to go. But if we can focus more attention, getting a truck route established, and then having the law enforcement to check them, you know, to make sure that they're there as well.
We need some kind of a subcommittee to help you, you know, kind of start this conversation. I mean, it needs to come in this year, but there's a lot of work to do on this.
There is a lot of work.
And I think that a subcommittee, getting some community members maybe in, might be helpful for you.
Well, I think, I think I would hugely be supportive of anybody wanting to come help. I think that's where, you know, a lot of the connection with the community and, and the county can collaborate and try to come up with a good solution that, you know, is essentially beneficial and approval for, for the vast majority of the people. Not everybody's gonna like it, but the vast majority.
I think what we need before we do a committee is we need a list of what needs to be done, in what time, in terms of if we do go for a road levy. So we need a list of the road collectors, the major road collectors. We need a list of the major ones that are failing. We need a possible truck route. Like, I think we need more stuff on paper to read and see, get our hands on before we really put this out.
It's, it, actually, we do, this is another thing I'm working on. We do have a, a program that does, it's called I-Works. And it specifically identifies all of our routes.
That should be in the master transportation plan, because they use I-Works.
They, they did, but it hadn't been updated in terms of that transportation plan. And if, if you recall, the transportation plan was to essentially rebuild all the roads. It didn't identify if a particular road could be rehabbed to a certain point or reconstructed, or just a seal-coated. But it does get to that level that, and I, we could print it off to have a overview of that. Because there's a, a couple of things that I'm trying to get with the CIP to include is an additional module that will help. It's called the Work Management Module. It helps identifies all of our routes. It will identify how much costs are being incorporated for each route. Not only the material that goes in, but also the manpower. And I think that is so important as we start talking about levy because it is a, a, a kind of a planned approach to get to that point.
And I know the CIP committee needed some more information. Jeremy had not heard about this, and we needed a price.
Right, so I do have that, and I knew Jeremy wanted to chat about that, so. But it, it, I think it'll be beneficial. Along with that same module, there, there is a second module that I, I think is important to get out to the public, because a lot of times the public is able to request information from us. And normally we do that with the phone, and we, you know, it's kind of analog system. But this is more about texting, providing photographs, images of what they're actually talking about. And it goes, and it resides into a, a general email account. And so that all of us can look at it and then try to answer the question, respond to the location, and then the follow-up that, that happens. I think these are the things that we need to be more strategic. These are the things that I think will be beneficial as we start talking about levy and how we're going to respond to the, not only the improvements, but how we maintain the system as a whole.
Can we fix the hole that's right on the other side of the S-Bridge?
Oh, that, that is ongoing. We keep filling it, yes.
Can't we just cut it out and do something to fix that hole?
We know about that. We, we always get comments about that.
So they are getting my comments now on tape.
You're still on track on cutting that puppy back.
Well, see, this is where I'm gonna have to prioritize what, what available funds we have. I don't know exactly where it's gonna go yet in terms of that. I, I really wanna be hopeful that we can get it done. I just don't, I just don't know how much of that, of our budget will be able to go towards that.
We didn't, you didn't have somebody give you a quote on it yet or anything?
I'm sorry?
Nobody gave you a quote on that yet?
Well, I've talked with a, another bridge engineer at LTAC. We came up with that general item about, I think it was one hundred fifty, two hundred thousand roughly. There's gonna be some work that we're gonna do. But some work that the contractor will, will have to do. And I was hoping, whatever contract, we would do simultaneously with the S-Bridge to whatever I, we can fund on West Roseberry.
Okay, just ask another question.
Before my time's up, I need to mention, so I'm really happy about this. Our, we figured out a water truck. There's been ongoing issues with trying to purchase a water truck. We actually, I think, got approval to buy one last year. Our guys are really good at utilizing what we've got to figure it out. And, and we have figured out how to utilize a, a dump truck, get a tank on it. We're almost there that it's almost operational. So what we wanna do is we wanna use those, those funds to buy a telehandler. And I think the CIP group heard about this, and Jeff has different, a different thought process i- in it. But I wanted to present it to you guys to, to know that we would prefer to use those funds to buy this terr, telehandler. It's just a, a better opportunity to move, move things. Once we get over to Gold Dust, it's gonna really help.
Telehandler?
It's a, well, let's just see, it's. Yeah, it's a forklift that is able to go extend out and come back down. So you have the ability of moving things a lot. Because we're, we need to go up high to stack things.
You're talking a great hole.
Oh, what's that?
A great hole, what I call them.
Oh, okay, I, that's a new one on me.
It's just a brand name, but they're, they're four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
All four tires same size. I know what you're talking about.
Is this a want or requirement? That's the biggest thing, because you don't know what that building's gonna cost yet.
Yep.
And we might need those funds to finish a building, and that could definitely be added.
I just wanted to, to present the, the, the topic to you guys in terms of what we were thinking. And we're, we're hopeful that we can get that water truck repurposed of all of our other material and then try to come up with another solution that could help us long-term.
We're gonna be phasing some things.
I'm sure.
Two and three, because right now we are, we're looking at a lot of costs and limited amount of money. So we're gonna have to figure out what's phase one, what's the need, not the wants.
Yeah.
Bottom line.
I think that's all I had.
Good luck with it.
Are, are you gonna come back for the ITD update?
I saw that, but I didn't know if I should, because I knew I was gonna do the partnership tomorrow. Would that, you want me to be here for, for Saturday?
To you. We're just talking what their plan is for Valley County.
I can, I can definitely sit down on it.
You might want just to know what their thoughts are and what our requests are, so.
Yeah, I was planning to go out, Jeff and I were planning to go out to their partnership.
At one o'clock? I remember what time that is tomorrow.
Oh.
I'll be there. We finally have him here.
They're gonna talk about the new bridge down at Rainbow.
That doesn't really have anything to do with us.
Two o'clock.
In our county?
Oh, it's in our county, yeah. I don't know, probably. You can ask them that this afternoon. That's the whole thing, is updating all of us this afternoon. And then they'll come back and update once they get our thoughts for more, so.
I'll be there, two o'clock.
Yeah, the, the conversation, I would get it on an agenda, unless you want me to get it on an agenda. But, I mean, literally, there's so much to discuss before we move forward, but. I just sent the master transportation plan to the other commissioners, so that they have a chance. um I just sent the master transportation plan to the other commissioners, so that they have a chance to kind of look at that. I can't believe that was twenty-three already. That's just nuts. Time's just going so fast.
Well, as part of that, you know, they, the um consultant also updated the um the, what would you call it? It's, it's the um starting point in terms of the overall cost of impacts. And uh those are, you know, probably twenty-two dollars, not quite twenty-three. So we're getting to that point where now we're in twenty-five, so that will have to be adjusted and updated as well.
And there's so much. I mean, the the priority list that was given then, it's, you know, millions and millions of dollars.
Yeah.
To upgrade our our transportation plan. So people need to understand that this is that moment in time and we are not gonna rely on federal and state partners. It's outside of our control and people are very upset over the roads right now.
Yeah.
So we've we've got to have a longer term plan on how we're gonna resolve some of this, move forward. They they deserve that. So it's time to have that, those hard conversations to figure out how to plan some of this and how to pay for it.
Property taxes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, that's what it's gonna come down to. We've never had it before, but I don't know.
People think their taxes are going to it anyhow. They go, why don't you use some tax taxes, maybe we can?
Next on our agenda is the meeting minutes of May fifth. Did everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yep, I read all those. I was good with it.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of May twenty twenty-five as presented. Moved in second at all in favor? And Yali, are you doing the appointment for Mr. Is it Magnum? Is it Magnum or Mangum?
I don't know.
I think it was incorrectly typed, so.
If any questions.
Read his uh
Oh, it is Magnum.
Read his stuff and it was, sounds solid. I guess you've met him already.
I have a concern in that is Scott still on your board? So now you're gonna have two people from Tamarack on that board.
Scott, I've talked to Scott and he has not officially resigned, but he, I've talked to him. He can't hardly make a meeting, so I said, you know, why don't you replace him yourself with somebody? Cuz I'd like to have somebody from that organization be on the board.
I think it's very appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate if we have two.
No, I agree. So I I'll talk to Scott and and uh but he's so busy with other projects and he's on other committees and all that stuff and I.
I think Grant makes a lot more sense to have on there, what he's dealing with there, Marina, than it does for Scott to be on there. So maybe we would accept a resignation next month from Scott. And I I don't know how you guys feel, but that's how I feel.
I have an, I have an opening right now on the board because me, Dave Parrish. I'm working on another guy, but I haven't fully gotten response yet, so. So I figure as we are kind of short of people coming to our meetings and we've tried to get a quorum, I said, uh let's replace that position right now and then.
How many do you have for committee members?
I have four right now.
I mean, how many you would like to have?
Oh, five.
Five of them?
I have, well, actually, we have three because Scott hardly makes it.
And I think that when you're looking at those positions, I think we have to be a little bit balanced with who is voting. And I don't know where those, where your people are from. Is Jared Montague still on there? Is Jared still on there? So it's you and Jared, Scott. Who are the other voters?
Steve Hall.
He's on there from Cascade.
Cascade. And then we have a guy from Donnelly.
Okay, so is McCall represented at all?
Yeah, both Jared and myself are McCall area.
Oh, okay, great.
We have two and then just as square as it is McCall or Donnelly at.
Okay.
We have another one and then I got Steve on it to try to get somebody from the southern part of Leboni.
Oh, that's great.
So this guy is pretty much taking Dave's place then.
Actually, we'll take Scott's place.
Who took Dave's place?
Dave, nobody has.
Nobody has?
No, we're working on one.
Dave was Lake Fork?
Dave was uh Donnelly area, Lake Fork, yeah.
He's a good guy.
I have no problem. This gentleman sounds very qualified, but I do think that we need to ask for Scott's resignation and get him.
I will.
One person on there from Tamarack.
I'll talk to him. Hey, I had a discussion with a couple of months ago and he he agreed with that. He didn't have the time. So he says he was gonna recommend somebody to his basement. And I said, well, don't get off the board yet because.
Could we make the motion that we approved the appointment of him uh contingent on receiving Mr. Turlington's resignation letter? I think that's very appropriate.
Well, you could do that or, because we have an opening on the board and, you know, and I'll come back to you.
But I think Commissioner Mopin's concern is we wanna make sure that all of them didn't stay on the board, both of them.
I have no, I don't believe that's an issue at all, so.
Sorry to speak for you. I think that would be appropriate to do that. And then I think it would be appropriate to put out, you know, through our PR that we're looking for a member. And, you know, instead of trying to recruit, maybe we find out who's out there in the community and wants to.
My problem is you run into problems with that because you get people on the board and you have no idea what it is. And then we, you know, and then they resign because they get bored, whatever.
You have five applicants, though, you might be able to find one that's really well qualified.
Like I said, I was work, we're working on one. Jared is working. He's talked to somebody. I won't give his name out yet because I wanna see what what he's interested in or not. He's working on one. I'll let you know as soon as that.
Well, if we don't get somebody, let's put something in the newspaper and see who's out there that's interested, so.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I would make the motion that we appoint Mr. Grant Magnum to Valley County Waterways Committee contingent on the resignation of Mr. Turlington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Has been moved in second at all in favor?
Thank you.
All right. That is the last action item we have this morning, so we will recess for lunch and be back here at one o'clock.